There is a Crayle expression, to walk together. Where life is hard, people depend upon and help each other. So that man may pray together to praise the same moral principles and together reaffirm.
I now open the meeting at seven oh four P M. I'm now from the ordinary council meeting on the twenty third of July twenty twenty four at seven oh four P M. Good evening, councillors. I'd like to acknowledge the recent passing of Andrew William Galotta. This will also be the subject of a Meryl minute on the business paper and we will now observe a minute's silence. Thank you, councillors. I will now ask call on councillor Olive to read the acknowledgement.
I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bidigal and Gadigal peoples who occupied the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to elders past and present and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
I'll now call on councillor Wilson to read a prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia.
Thank you. I will now call for apologies and leave of absence. Any apologies? None. I've received requests from three councillors to attend tonight's meeting by audio visual link. Can I please have someone move a motion as follows? That the request by councillors McHafferty, Pendlefeeny and Parker to attend the ordinary meeting of the council of the twenty fifth of June twenty twenty four by audio visual link be approved? Actually, Andrew, yeah. So that the councillors be noted that they are unable to attend in person for, as they're not in Sydney. So I move by councillor Hay, seconded by councillor Chapel. All those in favour? Against? Declare that carried. We now move to the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting of the twenty fifth of June twenty twenty four. May I have some move on? Councillor Chapel? Seconded by councillor Nielsen, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary or non pecuniary interests? Councillor Wilson.
Regarding notice of motion sixty six of twenty four regarding the Australian Law Society of Law's equitable briefing policy. I have a conflict of interest in that. It's a non significant, non pecuniary in that I am a barrister and I am a woman. But it's about assisting women. But it's a very unlikely that I think that Randwick council would ever brief me as a barrister. And if they did, it would be my duty to refuse that brief. So I will be voting on this matter.
Are there any further declarations? Councillor Chapel?
In relation to M M thirty three slash twenty four twenty twenty four Sydney Marathon, I am participating in the Sydney Marathon, but I don't think that means I have a significant conflict of interest.
All right, I'll now go to the chairperson's announcement and the privacy warning. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause five point two to five point two three of councils code of meeting practice. Audio visual recording of meetings is prohibited without permission. And a person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio video recorder without the express authority of the council. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of four minutes in which to put their case forward with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped when the four minutes has expired. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the each of, at the end of each public submission. And our first speaker in relation to M M twenty nine slash twenty four, recognition of the Urimbla precinct within the new Randwick Hospital redevelopment. Speaking for Jennifer Blennerhassett.
I think that's all right, you can hear me, okay. Good evening, Mayor Veach and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of the Urimbla Precinct History Association Incorporated. Firstly, we would like to thank Randwick Council for providing a grant enabling the Urimbla Precinct History Association to produce in twenty twenty the book Remembering Urimbla, A Suburban Community eighteen fifty one to two thousand and eighteen, Randwick, New South Wales. Special thanks and gratitude to a couple of councillors. Mayor Veach was actively engaged with the community and provided support throughout the acquisition and beyond. Likewise, councillor Nielsen provided support for a grant application, wrote the forward to the book and launched it at Bowen Library. The Urimbla Precinct History Association has achieved its goals and is planning to counsel the registration of the association this year and to revert to a history group. It was agreed that the remaining money of approximately eight hundred dollars could go towards paying for the installation of a commemorative plaque. As mentioned in the M M, a museum wall within the Prince of Wales Acute Care Services Building will showcase three timelines, Indigenous, Prince of Wales Hospital and European Settlement. We feel that a commemorative plaque placed near where the entrance to Urimbla Avenue came off High Street will provide clear recognition that more than ninety homes existed in the area and that a street name, Urimbla Avenue, existed there until twenty eighteen. We are requesting that Randwick City Council liaise with South Eastern Sydney Local Health District for permission to install a commemorative plaque indicating the previous existence of Urimbla Avenue and more than ninety families who lived there. Thank you. Made the time.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? Councillor Nielsen?
I'll just make a little comment to say how sorry I feel for you and your fellow residents who had to move out of the area. It was absolutely traumatic. But the wonderful collection that of stories that you put together as a group is really wonderful. You're a good example of when something awful happens, like what happened to you, coming together to put something in a positive way to go forward is really inspiring. So, and thanks for being optimistic. It's been terrible. I did actually speak to the minister. I did actually go and met with Minister Hazard and tell him that it was an appalling decision. And I did get the feeling that actually, even though we're not in the same political party and so on, I got the feeling that he, in his heart, did actually realise how traumatic it all was. So, yeah, I think that what you're requesting is something that we definitely should be agreeing with and wanting to do. And also, I think that the minister should be also wanting to do something positive because you deserve it, you all truly do deserve it. So thanks for coming and speaking tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to the next speaker, speaking in relation to M M thirty one slash twenty four, Surfing New South Wales Waving of Fees, speaking for Mr Mark Wynden.
Good evening, mayor and fellow councillors. Thanks for this opportunity. Over twenty years ago, Randwick City Council, through the then New South Wales Surf Riders Association, a lifeline which enabled us to establish a permanent home base at the sport, for the sport of surfing at Maruba in the Pavilion Building above the lifecards. Prior to this, we led a behemothic existence, moving every eighteen months to two years, which was not conducive to establishing a headquarters for a state sporting organisation. Over this time, there's been numerous changes, including the name change to Surfing New South Wales, which had all state bodies following suit, using the same name and logo as Surfing Australia. This was instrumental in our growth as a sport. We now look, we, prior to that, we look like a, we now look like a unified sport as opposed to a ragtag bunch of licorice all sorts. Maruba Beach has well and truly established itself as the home of surfing in New South Wales, which for me was only natural being born and bred in Maruba and establishing South End Border Riders in nineteen eighty five. I knew firsthand that surfing was in your D N A if you lived in this area. Over this time, Surfing New South Wales have continued to grow with ten regional associations from Surfing Far North Coast in the Tweed down to Surfing Far South Coast, South End, Aruma. Nearly two thousand kilometres of coastline, over fifteen hundred beaches, a hundred and forty border rider clubs and seventy surf schools, operating from Byron to Bondi and Bondi through to Booga. As CEO, I developed Surfers Rescue twenty four seven over ten years ago, where we teach recreational surfers who are often first responders in any rescue situation already being in the water with a flotation device, rescue techniques and C O P R. Surfers Rescue twenty four seven has been named Community Education Programme of the Year for the last, for three years in a row. I was humbled to receive an O A M for my services to serving in two thousand and seventeen. And I believe Surfers Rescue twenty four seven played a major role in this award. To date, we've had over twenty thousand surfers do the course and have recorded some amazing rescues. More recently, we are now delivering trauma first aid and drone trading to our affiliated clubs as well. Our events from grassroots and regional events through the leagues of the world too will play a vital role in continuing to create a solid pathway for aspiring young Aussie surfers wishing to pursue a career in professional surfing. Over this time, some of the surfers who have come through the Genius Development Programme include Lane Buchley, Stephanie Gilmore, Sally Fitzgibbon, Tyler Wright, Mick Fanning, Owen Wright, to name but a few. Owen winning her first ever Olympic medal for surfing in Tokyo and his sister Tyler representing Australia this year in Tahuti at the famed Chopu Break. Not a lot of surf in Paris, although a wave pool under the Eiffel Tower, which would have been pretty cool. Coming off the back of Cabot, the sporting landscape with sponsorship and government funding for many sports has changed dramatically. For the first time since my involvement with Surfing New South Wales, last financial year, we've, we've posted a significant loss for a myriad of reasons. Several sponsors not renewing current agreements, the government cutting back in numerous funding areas. All of this has created a perfect storm for us as an organisation. There is light at the end of the tunnel and we will need to run skinny for the next twelve to eighteen months as we turn this around. With a new CEO at the helm, who was already burned in to meet both Ray Brownlee and Todd Clark, myself and the rest of the board are confident in our strategy moving forward, although I find myself working more hours now than when I was sitting in the big chair and all of which is being done pro bono, which has impressed my own partner no end. As a life member of exec, and executive director of Surfing New South Wales, I'm here tonight to ask Randwick Council, who has a long history with Surfing New South Wales, for a hand up, not a handout. I look forward to the next twenty years and Maruba Beach continuing to be the home of surfing in New South Wales, Australia's number one lifestyle, lifestyle sport. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Vinnie. Vinnie, sorry. Ma. Vinnie, you've got to hang around for a few minutes, mate.
I feel like I'm in the White House.
Not at all, not at all. After what a wonderful job he did on Sunday at beach breaks, Vinnie, thank you. Vinnie, yeah, I first let me just thank you for the, I know it was your vision, this Walk of Fame and everything.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. I noticed that when your name was there, it didn't say O A M and I, I know. And you did say in your speech, anyway, the question I, I, which we should get to, besides thanking you for everything you've done for our community and bringing us together and the beach breaks and the Walk of Fame, all those things and your voluntary service. Do you, this Maruba master plan that's coming in and, you know, council's spending a lot of money to rebuild the, the lifesavers club.
Yep.
Will that affect you at all? I know it's at the Pavilion. Would you like, would it make a difference to you or will you be in inconvenience, your, your group?
No, look, we've, as I said, we've had, we've got a great relationship with council and are more than happy to work in whatever the plan, the future plans are for the beach. But I don't see that being an inconvenience to us.
And, and you used, you said, I, I want leg up or lift up rather than a handout. So what you're implying is that this is just a short term thing?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we'll be right within six months.
Thank you. Well, well earned honours too. Thank you, Vinnie.
Thanks very much. No more.
Thank you. We now move to the speaker for our N M fifty eight slash twenty four. Notice, notice of motion from councillor Parker. Maraborra Reserve Off Leash Dog Park Proposals, speaking for is Jodie Savage.
Good evening, Mayor Veach and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to talk this evening. I'm here representing the dog owning community of Maraborra Reserve. Here is a local resident and hoping to, for you to support the motion number fifty eight twenty four, making Maraborra Reserve an off leash dog park. We would like council to consider the many reasons why the Maraborra Reserve would make an excellent off leash dog park. Firstly, the existing infrastructure. The reserve already has containment fencing surrounding the majority of the park, allowing dog owners to feel safe that their companions will not get injured by any road accidents. The large multi tiered space allows for separation so perhaps smaller, large dogs can exercise in different areas and therefore minimising any potential negative behaviour. It is a good use of this green space, precious green space in a built up environment. It cannot be used for sports ground due to the topography. And if it's not off leash, it just becomes really a wasted space of a walk through. It can be used at all times of the day and year. Unlike other off leash parks in the area, for example, Broad Arrow Reserve has a neighbouring Catholic school that uses this green space for students during the day. It's used as a car park during the summer months and now it will be used for markets for, on a regular basis, preventing dog owners from using it during these times. And I'd also like to note that this reserve only has delineation fencing around the edge. It doesn't have containment fencing and it's next to one of the busiest roads in Maruba. So it makes it very unsafe, not only for dog owners and dogs, but also drivers driving past. There is already an extremely large dog owning community that uses this reserve as a community meeting place to exercise their dogs. Currently, over a hundred residents are on our WhatsApp group. We thank councillor Parker, councillor Chapel and councillor Rosenfeld, who attended a meeting at the reserve only a few weeks ago to hear from us and saw in person what a passionate, committed community we are and connected. The amazing community spirit is developed through this dog owning community where people rely on social connections and support and not just in dog ownership. For example, we've had people, we've had operations where they've had limited mobility and often others from the park offer to walk their dogs. Or we have elderly members who live in close proximity to this reserve. They use it not only for, to exercise their furry companions, but they also often seek help in other things outside of using the park in their life. And we've also heard from new residents who've moved to the area to say that the openness and welcome they've received make them instantly feel part of the Randwick local community. And we're also a respectful community where we self police each other. If we see a dog foul and perhaps the owner misses it, then we definitely let them know and make sure that they pick up after their dog. It's also in our interest to keep that area as clean as possible as well. And for the amount of use that it has, I would say that it's actually in very good condition currently. On behalf of all of the Maraborra Reserve dog owning community, I would like to express how essential this space is as an area where we can exercise our dogs off leash safely and how it has fostered a sense of belonging over a wide demographic of people for a number of years. And we would love to see that continued. We would like to thank you for your time and we would like, we hope to hear all of you vote in favour of the motion this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Madam, and thank you, Jodie, and everyone for coming along today and also for introducing all of your dogs to us. That was my favourite meeting I've had this year. I just wanted to ask, as part of considering this motion here, I think we can also consider what other things might happen at the reserve. So I know the fence is not fenced the whole way round. I know there is at least one doggy bag thing, but maybe.
There is, there is two, yeah.
Okay, and there's a water bubbler. Is, is, are there any other changes you think that would be needed? Or are you pretty happy, the community's pretty happy with it where it is?
Like you say, pretty happy apart from perhaps fencing in those two areas that I think it was, they're not openings. People have removed the fencing. And what I would really love to see is proper signage that announces it as an off leash dog park. And even, and I gave this example when we met, and Bayside Council have an off leash dog park and there's a signage as you walk in that says the rules and the regulations. And so then it makes it very clear for not just the dog owners, but perhaps people who aren't confident with dogs, knowing that space is an area where dogs will be off leash.
Councillor, councillor D'Souza.
Jodie, before I said, what is your dog's name and how old is your dog?
She's called Raina, which is Spanish for queen, and she's two years old.
Thank you very much. A name like Raina Savage, I think is inappropriate. But in saying that, my dear Jodie, so where is the nearest off leash dog park?
And so, so there's, in, in the Maruba area, there's two others. Broad Arrow Reserve, which is down at the beach. And that one was the one I was saying where it has other uses, which means you can't exercise. And then there's Nagel Park, which is, it's a longer way and it's, but it's also a sports field and it doesn't have any fencing and the same with Coral Sea Park. It's a sports field with no fencing.
It's a good location.
Yes.
And you said, how, how many of our residents, and I don't mean just the four legged ones, how many of our residents do you think will benefit if this goes through?
Well, there's, there's at least over a hundred people on our WhatsApp group, but then I know that there's other members that aren't on the WhatsApp group that come down. So, I mean, what would you say is like a hundred, two hundred?
Now, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, I'd best of luck to Raina Savage. Good luck to you. I hope it all goes through. Thank you.
Councillor Parker?
Yes, I, tha, tha, thank you very much. Apologies for having to join via audio visual link. My question just in relation to, there was a suggestion around if successful that there be a house rules adopted. Could I just get some information on which council it was that you suggested was a good example around that?
It's Bayside Council and it's Joseph Banks Off Leash Dog Park down on the foreshore there.
Okay, th, thank you very much. I will ensure to incorporate that into the, into the motion, that we consider signage alongside of that. And what I'd just also like to say is a huge thank you for organising and being part of the large group that came on the meeting that was organised a couple of weeks ago. So thank you very much. It was very informative and I very much appreciated it.
No worries. We're all very passionate. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the speaker, speaking for N M sixty seven slash twenty four. Notice of motion from councillor Hamilton, Searle Avenue Randwick Parking Solutions. Speaking for is Mr Nile Green.
Good evening and thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. So I'm Nile Green. I'm here with my wife Patricia. We're resident owners of number three Searle Avenue. There's some material on the screen there just to put it into a bit of perspective. So the request, we're requesting on behalf of eight owner residents on Searle Avenue for the Randwick City Council to extend the current resident parking zone on the east side of Searle Avenue by approximately thirty metres down to the corner of Searle Avenue and Frenchman's Road. And secondly, to impose a thirty minute time limit on non resident parking in the new proposed resident parking zone. At present, the resident parking zone, it's a two hour Monday to Saturday, eight to six P M, between the house numbers one and number nine. So I guess the second photograph there is just to give people a bit of perspective of what the street looks like in reality. We have a petition signed by eight residents of Searle Avenue, seven owners plus one renting, seeking the same due to the lack of parking available on the street. So some of the, I suppose the sources of the parking issues, some of the issues have been around the, the business, the Randwick Car Care business operating in the corner of Frenchman's Road and Searle Avenue, taking up car parking spots on both the east and west side of Searle Avenue. Mechanics are actually working on the cars on the streets. So there's some photographs in relation to that. There's a tra, a, a, a trailer of tyres which is permanently parked on the west side of Searle Avenue since we moved in about twelve years ago. The mechanics also operate a, a sort of a tag team style approach to parking cars. One mechanic moves the car, the next one, allowing the next mechanic to, to move in and secure the same spot. And then we also have cars that have left idle in the street outside of the resident parking zone. So there's just some photographs there of cars being operated in the, directly on the street. Also, a new car detailing business has recently opened up as well, which operates upstairs of Randwick Car Care. Hasn't started yet, but the residents that we spoke to anticipate that this will further exacerbate the unavailability of parking spots on the street. Parking industry's become so bad that three owner residents, seven, nine and eleven, were forced to have driveways installed, which means that, you know, we've, that's now been reduced by a further three spots from ten to seven. Being forced to do the same to install a driveway is cost prohibitive as we found from those, talking to those that are residents. It's extremely frustrating for residents on the street to find parking near their homes, arriving home, kids, food, baggage, shopping. We're then forced to seek out parking on adjacent streets, Chemist Street, Roberts Avenue. We're then forced to seek out parking on adjacent streets, Chemist Street, Roberts Avenue, which then just causes the problems for people in those streets. In closing, and that's the image on the screen, by extending the parking zone on Searle Avenue down to the corner of Frenchman's, which is the orange section there, and imposing a 30-minute limit, just to allow an additional four, maximum of five vehicles to be added to the parking zone, so the residents will be able to find a park easier. It'd be fair for visitors using some of the shops on the end of Searle and Frenchman's Avenue, giving them opportunities to find a park. So in consideration of others, some of the businesses on that street, and those working from home, we're not asking for any changes to the entire west side.
Please continue.
We're not asking for any changes to the entire west side, nor the east side of Searle Avenue down to Clavell Road, where there are no resident parking zones. So just to extend the length and the time limit, which we would think would be both fair, and feel that our annual parking permit fee is providing value for money. Thank you.
Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr Green, and thanks for coming to talk on behalf of the residents. My question is in, in relation to the relationship with the business in the street. Would you be happy to come up with a solution that suits everyone in the street?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, you know, I still get my car serviced there, you know. I, you know, it's a problem with parking, but still, you know, that's a different relationship that we have. But yeah, still be open to, open to options and open to discussion with them, you know, for a peaceful resolution, shall we say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, councillors, with your indulgence, I'll ask that we, someone move a procedural motion to bring forward the items on which there have been speakers tonight. Councillor Chapel, seconded by councillor Sedd, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. So we'll now move to Merrill Minute, MM29/24, recognition of the Yarimbla Precinct within the new Randwick Hospital redevelopment. Councillors, it seems like a long time ago now, but back in 2017, it was during, it was not long before the election that year in September that the residents of Yarimbla Avenue were door-knocked and informed that they would have to vacate their homes in order to make way for the new hospital. The new hospital is obviously a much-needed facility, but it was quite a shocking and traumatising experience for those residents. And it was a privilege to support them during that time, to try and get some kind of support and justice for them during a very difficult transition period. It was a very tight-knit community, many of, some of those people had lived there for like 60 years or even more. So it was a difficult period, and, but many people in that group continued to stay in touch even after they left. And as councillor Nielsen has noted, as well as the speaker Jennifer, the precinct committee put together a book, and they had it wonderful launched out the Bowen Library, and they've always wanted to see that area somehow recognised within the new hospital campus. And so for that reason, they have put forward this request to get support to have a plaque in the new district. And I hope you will support the motion. Councillor Hay.
Thank you all. It's all together right and proper that we do the plaque to remember what has, what was there. But I just wanted to say a few things on the record as to why it happened. The government that was brought in in 2011 had a big challenge to deliver the next generation of health services to the people of Randwick. And in 2013, they built the Margaret Dean's Worth Building, and then the Nellie Un comprehensive Cancer Centre in 17. And then, when they wanted to build a new acute services building, Health Translation Hub and Children's Cancer Centre, it was very difficult because they had run out of space. The previous government had closed three nearby hospitals at the Royal Hospital in Paddington, Prince Henry Little Bay, and South Sydney Hospital in Zetland, and transferred a lot of that onto a very small campus within Randwick. So, and the key to it was the Health Translation Hub, which is all about pairing the best research with the best medical practice. So they needed more land, they needed to pick a good location, and the gap between UNSW...
Councillor Hay, is this about the motion? About the Merrill Minute?
Yes.
About the plaque?
Yes.
Thank you.
It was very important that it be that specific location. So no one wants to be one of the 90 homes that was compulsorily required, but that, it very much did have to be that specific location to build a bridge between UNSW and the hospital, both literal and metaphorical. So we recognise that the people who lost their homes, the old saying, you've, they did lose a lot, but hopefully we move forward as a community and we appreciate all of the future that will be brought out by the new precinct as well. Thank you.
Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Following up on councillor Hay and others, these were just houses. These were homes. They weren't made of bricks and mortar. They were made with love and memories, lots of love and memories. These people were moved on, and we know the reasoning why. But this was where people would come home to their families, share their love and memories, a place to come home to, a place where they could enjoy the quality of life that they did. We can't rewrite history. We can't change what has happened. But this motion allows us to give some support, some consolation to these people who built homes, not just houses. So I fully support it. I think you'll find we all will support it, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
If there's no further speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against, I declare that carried. We'll now move to MM31/24, Surfing New South Wales Waiver of Fees. We had Mark Wynden here from Surfing New South Wales come to speak and explain the reasons why this was so important. They've made an incredible contribution to our community and to the sport of surfing, not only within New South Wales, within Australia. And we now have some of the surfers who have come up through their programmes actually representing Australia on an international level, and even at the Olympics. So they've made a massive contribution, but times are tough at this particular period. And so I think it's really important that council can play a role and step in to help them during this period. So I hope you will support this motion. Councillor Chapel.
I just want to speak in favour of the minute, and thank Mark for coming in and for all the incredible work that has been done. And just reaffirm, Maruba is not just the heart of surfing in Australia, it's the heart of the whole country, and the best word.
Councillor Sedd.
And I'd just like to reiterate those points, and also let everyone know that also that Maruba Beach is one of the only surfing reserves in Australia. So, and that is tetrimet to the work that Winnie has done. And also, at the same time, it's one of the only places that does have a surfing Hall of Fame. So we've got a lot to owe Surfing New South Wales, and it's been a fantastic partnership so far, and it's all about onwards and upwards. And I'm sure that everyone will, it'll be a hand up, as Winnie said, and we'll quite happy to help you get along there.
Councillor D'Souza.
Come in, Madam Mayor. I was privileged enough to be at Maruba Beach on Sunday with the other councillors. And it made me very proud, being a local resident, that we offer activities for these young people in that area, I believe, and Winnie, I'm sure, knows that we have, at one of the local clubs, one of the highest rate of nippers, I think, in Australia. Now, this is all about building communities. We talk about a sense of community in Randwick City. Well, organisations like the Surf Clubs and Winnie and New South Wales Surfing, which he started, it was his vision, brings our community together. I liked what you said, especially you said something that was so important. I don't want a handout. You weren't asking, we're in trouble, we need help. That's what people do. There used to be a song the Hollies would sing, he ain't heavy, he's my brother. Well, there's an opportunity to do the right thing again. You've got my full support. Thank you.
If there are no further speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against, I declare that carried. We now move to NM58/24, Notice of Motion from councillor Parker, Marubara Reserve Off-Leash Dog Park Proposal. Moved by councillor Chapel, sorry, moved by councillor Parker, seconded by councillor Chapel. Apologies, councillor Parker. Councillor Parker.
That's okay. Can I just confirm that the meeting can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Mr Kelly, I've sent through a slightly amended version of text. Can I just confirm that he has received that? Okay, thank you. Councillors, I move this in an amended fashion. It includes point one, that reads that Randwick Council exhibited in the month of August a proposal for an off-leash dog park encompassing the entirety of the Marubara Reserve, Marubra. And it inserts the words on the suggestion of councillor Chapel, including consideration of enclosure of any gaps. I, following this excellent suggestion from the speaker, have added in an additional point that any proposed, any proposal developed include consideration of ground rule signage, additional waste bags, bins and water stations. Councillors, thank you in advance, hopefully for your support in relation to this motion. It is brought as a result of some concerted, but rather friendly, community comments and support for formalising Marubara Reserve as an off-leash dog area. I had the pleasure of meeting on my request, what I thought was going to be a handful of local residents, but turned out to be a pack, so to say, of local residents, I think over 50 or so, on a chilly Sunday morning, there with some exceptionally well-behaved dogs, who, I have to say, really were a testament to their owners and their excellent training in relation to that. And we, for about half an hour, went through the views of the community in relation to formalising this. It is quite clear from the conversations that I've had that it is a very important place for local dog owners to have their dogs run off-leash and exercise. And not only that, that it's a benefit not just to the dogs, but to them, as well as local residents socialising and building a bit of a community down there. I have to say, I was convinced by the, by the views which were expressed there, and encourage the community to have their say on a proposal put by council in a reasonably short period of time, noting that we've already done an extensive amount of work in relation to investigating dog, off-leash dog areas in the past, putting it to the community. And the additional signage, waste bags, bins and water stations, I think, are an appropriate measure there. So look, I fully commend this motion and thank the members of the community for their advocacy in relation to this, and hopefully we'll get a great result for our community quickly. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel is the second one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Parker for bringing the motion, and to all of the residents who advocated for this. I think, I reflect back a few months ago in April, where the motion passed through council to put the signs up. And I think at the time, I recall, I and the councillors mentioned that this area had already been designated by the community as an off-leash dog park, and that it was a foolish endeavour to try and overturn what they had already collectively decided was going to be the way that this park would be used. I'm really glad to see this motion in front of council. I really hope that it does get the support of council. And I think, you know, the culture that has developed around this park is really positive. It's really supportive, and it's really, I've got kids at the nearby school, we spend a lot of time at the playground. It's a really safe dog park to be around, which I don't say about a lot of dog parks. So thank you to Jodie for today, thanks Edward, thanks Anne, thanks Barbara, thanks everybody whose name I can't remember who came and said hi, and thanks for your advocacy. And please do contribute when this goes out on public exhibition, so that the full view of the community is heard.
Thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yes, as a dog owner, I fully sympathise with the, with the group here. I know the importance of exercising your dog at parks and having space in order to be able to exercise your dog at parks. And I certainly saw through the passion in the meeting and also the emails that are received, that certainly there is, there's a lot of passion in, and there's a lot of feeling that people do want this park to be an off-leash park. And that's what we're here for, we're here to listen to the residents, and more than happy to support the motion, and was happy to work together with councillor Parker in this one. I will remind that councillor Chapel actually did not want this to be a dog park when we did the full consultation throughout the LGA and asked for it to be removed. Oh, I thought it was yourself. I'll withdraw that. I will draw that up, yeah. But anyway, now we're in that position, we're all three central world councillors united, and happy to support the motion.
Councillor Sedd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just want to say how happy I am that this has come to council. Six years ago, myself and former mayor councillor Lindsay Shury brought it to council because we realised that Broad Arrow was very inappropriate to have an off-leash dog park in. And so it was even at that stage Nagel. And the only one that, Marubara was perfect because there was a fence there. No one ever used it for anything other than letting their dogs off there. And they had friends there, and they were begging myself and councillor Shury to do it. So in those days, everyone thought it wasn't a great idea, but I'm so happy now that it's finally come to fruition, and I think it's the perfect spot for it. And if it does, if anyone does take the time to go to Bayside, it is a perfect dog park. So if you want to go somewhere in the meantime, it is a really good spot.
Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, dogs are special to me, those that follow my Instagram, see dogs everywhere. But the reason being is actually I have a covenant with dogs. At the age of seven, I was attacked by a dog. Later on, if you want to check my dog mark, you can. But what it taught me, I feared dogs. I feared them a lot. My father said to me, at a tender age, you need to confront your fears. So I overcame that fear, and I developed a love for dogs. And those of us that follow the Spider-Man movies know when he gets bitten, well, he gets all those special powers. And I think the tenacity, the desire to protect and serve is, all happened because of my dog bite. I totally support this. I think it's really important for the community. I asked Jodie an important question. I said, how far is the nearest one? And she made it clear, this is what we're about, building communities. This will help enhance our sense of community. And more importantly, it'll give our four-legged friends an opportunity to be free. And we all remember that movie Bond Free. Everyone needs to be free. Good luck to them.
Thank you. If there's, are there any further speakers? Yeah, I know. Councillor Parker, do you wish to close?
Just briefly in closing, look, I thank my fellow councillors for their contributions to this debate. And once again, I'd like to reiterate the, the community advocacy in relation to this. It has been the hard work of the local members of that local group, who have been very persuasive in regard to this. One of the things which has come up in recent years has been consideration of a range of areas across our community and the appropriateness... areas across our community and the appropriateness of having off-leash dog areas, noting that there are, you know, quite contested attitudes out there in the community. And one thing which is very compelling to me is, is the fact that if, if you're not having Marabara as an off-leash dog area, then where are you? And you couldn't have a better example for it. And for that, I'm quite thankful for those who has encouraged the evolution in the thinking in relation to this and from the sounds of the debate, to have joined with me in hopefully designating this as an off-leash dog area. So, thank you to my fellow colleagues for your support in relation to this motion.
Thank you. I will put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now move to NM sixty-seven slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Hamilton, Searle Avenue, Randwick Parking Solution. Seconded by councillor Best. Sorry. Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you. Yes, I'm really glad that we've been able to hear from a resident. Thank you, Mr Green, for speaking. Your wife approached me at the Let's Chat. That's what the Let's Chats are all about, for, for residents to be able to come up and speak in person, to discuss the challenges and the issues that they might have in the area. So, I think that was really useful for us to meet. And then, of course, great work in following up and sending through the petition. I really hope that everyone supports this. I think that this is something that is exactly what our role is as councillors, looking after residents and the mix of businesses and residents. We don't want to stop anyone from being able to do what they need to do to, you know, have a living, so have a business, but also in their own home and in their streets, being able to get about their business. And that means at times taking children to hospitals and being able to get to the car and being able to, you know, park, knowing that they can get there close enough to their home, things like that that a lot of people take for granted. And we, we know that we have some really restricted parking problems in Randwick and in North Ward. So, then what it comes down to is approaching both parties in these situations and trying to come up with a plan that suits everybody. So, I really hope that everyone supports this. I think that, you know, the residents deserve to, to have a little bit of extra support on this matter and I'll leave it at that.
Councillor Best, I had you as the second, but councillor Nielsen also had her hand up as the ward councillor, I'm just wondering if you would. Okay.
I'd like to commend councillor Hamilton on this, this motion. Parking is always an issue in Randwick and coming up with the right balance is always critical. And this motion helps get the balance right. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Nielsen.
Yes, I commend this motion to fellow councillors and thank the residents for bringing this forward to us. And it is a tricky street, we know that, and it's become trickier with the increased business that the car repair place, which is a very good business apparently, on the corner is bringing there. And it's also tricky terrain along that particular street. So, I think it does need to have good consultation, investigation as to what will be the most appropriate way of dealing with this particular matter. And I think that going forward with the consultation is the right way to go.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hamilton, do you wish to close? In that case, I'll put the motion, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against, I declare that carried. We will now adjourn for a short 10-minute break. Thank you.
We'll move to MM twenty eight slash twenty four Randwick Girls and Randwick Boys High Schools. Councilors, everyone will be aware of the big change that is coming through with these two prominent schools in our LGA. Many, many of the young people in our area have attended Randwick Girls and Randwick Boys. Now for many decades with Randwick Boys High opening in nineteen forty nine and Randwick Girls in ten years later in nineteen fifty nine. There have been some outstanding students come through these wonderful schools. And I was also very fortunate recently to go to the annual music production, which they've been doing for years. I hadn't been for a few years and it's an absolutely extraordinary experience. The performances that are down, it was down at Nida, were absolutely incredible. So these two wonderful schools are now transitioning to a new era to join together into the new Randwick High School as a co-educational high school, which is a real milestone. But I think it was just really important to acknowledge this, this big change. To thank all of the past, the recent past principals Lucy Andre and Lance Rascal. And to thank the transitional and new principals and wish the new schools the very best of luck. And to also wish the year twelve students who are soon to be doing their trials and HSC, all the very best wishes from the council. So I commend the motion. If there are no speakers, I will put it, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We'll now move on to MM thirty slash twenty four Financial Assistance and Donations, May to June twenty twenty four. I'll take this as read. councillor Hamilton, do you have a question?
I actually have an amendment. I've sent an amendment through to Mr Kelly to keep A and B. And C, note that security was required for tonight's meeting and may be required for the August meeting. And D, to pay the amount for security from the Mayor's twenty twenty four, twenty five contingency fund. So I have a question through to the general manager, how much was the security for tonight?
Thank you. Through yourself, Madam Mayor, the security for tonight was one thousand and eighty dollars excluding GST.
Then I would say one thousand and eighty dollars for this meeting. And that if we are, if we do require security at the next meeting, that, that amount as well comes out of the Mayor's contingency fund.
I won't accept the amendment.
Madam Mayor, I would like to raise a motion of no confidence in the mayor and I've just sent it to David Kelly.
Sorry, what were the reasons?
I'd like to move a motion of no confidence in the mayor due to her inflammatory speech at UNSW last week. That was why the report in the media and as such brought the council into disrepute.
Councillor Rosenfeld, we're just, we're actually on MM thirty slash twenty four.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm basically raising a motion.
You can't raise a motion during the middle of another motion.
Madam Mayor, you just said that you are not accepting C and D amendment. And so councillor Rosenfeld is saying that due to your actions and due to your inability to take responsibility, that he...
I'll call for a five minute break. Thank you. I reopen the meeting at eight twenty three PM. Thank you councillor. We will move back to MM thirty slash twenty four. I note the suggested amendments by councillor Hamilton and I will accept the amendments. Is there any further debate? If not, I'll put it, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move to MM thirty two slash twenty four. Condolence motion for Andrew William Galotta, OAM, that council expresses its deepest condolences to the family of Andrew William Galotta, who passed away on the eighth of July twenty twenty four and acknowledged the passing of Andrew William Galotta with a minute's silence, which we have done. I commend the motion. Are there any speakers? Councillor Burst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Andrew William Galotta, OAM, was our, was a local pharmacist. And he was, he was born in October nineteen thirty seven in Sicily, Italy. And he arrived in August fifty one with his family and lived in Perry Street, Matreville for over sixty three years. In nineteen sixty two, he opened a pharmacy near the BP station on Banarong Road at Matreville. And then in nineteen seventy three moved, moved and opened the Matreville Medical Centre with the new Galotta Pharmacy underneath, basically on Galotta's Corner. He, he had inputs across medical fields, pharmaceutical fields, including HIV and AIDS pharmacy protocols. His, if you look at the, what multiculturalism is, Andrew would typify that in that they came from Europe, a war ravaged Europe. They then, they came from a war ravaged Europe, they came to Australia, they looked for opportunities to grow and bring their family into a safe environment. So they migrated to Australia, they learnt English, they assimilated in the Australian culture but still maintained their, their Italian roots. So, you know, you still hear Andrew talk about his nonna and nonno and the meals they used to cook. He was a pillar of, in our Matreville community and surrounds. He made, he made a positive impact to our community. He, he championed a lot of pharmaceutical and medical issues. And in the end, he also wrote a book from the marenzano to the didgeridoo. So the manzano is a, it's a, it's basically a, it's like a harp. And then, so he's going from a harp to the didgeridoo. So that was his metaphorical look at his move from Italy to a new home in Australia. And his legacy is ongoing in that there's still a pharmacy there today, which was opened back in nineteen seventy three, so over fifty years. And then also his other legacy is his son, who became a pharmacist and then went on to do further studies and became a local doctor. So coming to Australia, they've left a great legacy for our community. And I certainly commend the efforts and what he did for our community and he'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
Councillor De Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think councillor Burst spoke particularly well. Andrew Galotta was a very good and decent man who cared about his community. Andrew Galotta was a very good and decent man who cared about his community. As a pharmacist in Matterfield, I think it was fifty-six years I had the pharmacy down the road. I just made it to thirty-nine or often say forty years. But anyway, we were competitors, but we were still friends. And I used to deal with him on a regular basis. I got to know him very well. As if Bill didn't say, I'm sure he did say all these things about his O A M. So he got an Order of Australian Medal, he was vice president of the Pharmacy Guild. He did a lot of work for the School of Pharmacy at University of Sydney, where I think he held a fairly high position, eventually becoming a chair. But more importantly, we were part, or I'm a pharmacist, as it said, the School of Pharmacy was part of the School of Medicine. We were like a small part of it. But he actually through his championing, what pharmacists do and other things, he actually got an independent school of pharmacy, and that was very, very important for the young, next generation that were coming up. Not only that, he went on to, at the University of Technology, Lena, his wife, and him have a scholarship there. I think it's called a chair or whatever. But anyway, again, what is it? Yeah, Galotta, it's a scholarship. And it gives a young person an opportunity to become a pharmacist and all their fees are covered. But Andrew Galotta was a very, very good and decent man. Now, for those that may not know, yes, that book you mentioned, I should have brought a copy to show everyone. But in saying that, Andrew also did, he championed multiculturalism. He had very humble beginnings. His father started in a fruit shop, where you mentioned, and they had a small fruit business, they worked very, very hard. Andrew went on to school in university and they used the same premises to build their first pharmacy. They did particularly well and they moved down to the corner of Perry Street and Banarong Road. And they built a good practice. John Galotta mentioned the son, but he too is an O A M. And then I was researching his father and him, not for this, but for the funeral, because the family had asked me to help. I realised, you know, you judge a person, like what your children do is normally reflective of what you've done or the example you set them. My father is to say the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Those of you that can Google John Galotta will see, this man, the son, has done even more than his father. And coming back to his father, yes, I looked at the clock, time, humble beginnings, he was championed multiculturalism. But the other thing Andrew Galotta did, when many people didn't, he actually was generous to our Indigenous people. He would help them and they'd tell me again and again, unfortunately or fortunately, I had to follow in his footsteps. He would be very benevolent if people couldn't afford to pay for their medicines or baby food or nappies or any of those kind of things. He would allow them to take it and some would pay, some would not pay. But he was kind, he was compassionate, he was understanding. He was, another thing he was, was a cavalier, I hope I'm saying this right, cavalier, he was a knight of the Italian government. I myself was fortunate to be a knight of the French government. I'm a legionnaire of the Napoleonic Order, only twenty living Australians have that. But coming back to Mr Galotta, I was at the function with Ambassador and others were there. And they acknowledged him, they acknowledged his work. And tonight, thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving, we acknowledge this great Australian who did so much for our community in Matreville and so much more for the Indigenous people who now hold their heads up high. But it was people like Andrew Galotta that started it and helped us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? If not, I'll put it. All those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move to M M thirty-three slash twenty-four, twenty twenty-four Sydney Marathon. I think everyone's going to be very excited to have the marathon running through our L G A. And it's a relatively small amount to waive the fees to allow this amazing event to happen. I'm sure we'll have many local residents both participating and coming to cheer along the runners. So I commend the motion. Are there any speakers? Councillor Chapel.
I just wanted to say that I strongly commend the motion. The course last year, we had forty thousand runners out there and the twists and turns, particularly around St Teniel Park, were extremely painful. And I think people are going to be very joyous about the new course correction going all the way down Anzac Parade. They're going to be very grateful to Randwick City Council for supporting it. And it's going to mean forty thousand people coming down through that main street of our area and seeing just some of the great stuff we have on offer. So I think it's really exciting.
Thank you. If there's no further speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now move on to M M thirty-four slash twenty-four, L G New South Wales, twenty twenty-four Annual Conference, Helping to Address the Housing Crisis and Land Banking Through an Empty Homes Levy. Councillors, there's been so much discussion and angst about the housing crisis in the last few years. We know that so many of our residents are really up against the wall, either through housing prices or even renting now is almost, rental properties, affordable rental properties barely exist in our L G A. And it's horrendous to see people having to move homes. There are still, unfortunately, long-term empty homes. This does not apply to people who may have purchased a new property or people have passed away. There are legitimate reasons for homes to be left empty for periods of time. But when it's for more than twelve months or longer and it is simply an investment property that is not being put on the rental market or occupied by the owner, I think it's appropriate in these current circumstances to apply pressure to these investment property owners to put the home on the market or allow councils to impose an additional higher rates that can be put into a fund for affordable housing. Of course, in New South Wales, councils don't have the ability to do this. It needs to be, requires an amendment of the Local Government Act or other mechanisms. And so it really is a matter of lobbying the state government to look at this. And I have made personal representations to a number of the ministers. So I commend the motion. This is obviously to go to the Local Government Conference, which is coming up later this year. Is there any debate? Councillor Hamilton.
I can't support this motion. As you pointed out, there are a range of reasons that people might not be able to live in their home or they've purchased a home and are unable to live in it for lengths of time. And I just can't imagine that we would just take away people's homes, that they have fought hard to purchase, to live in, have connections with those homes for a range of different reasons. And so I can't support this motion and I won't be voting with this motion.
Councillor Hamilton, just to correct the record, we're not taking away anyone's home. It's after a period of time and request if the home was not, and there was no explanation offered to impose a higher levy. But this is literally just about lobbying the state government. Councillor Olive.
The A B C, you know, some online have done a series of stories on this about empty homes, you know, that have been home, that have been empty for years and years. They did, you know, sort of a, some kind of a graphic where, you know, sort of you could click on to particular suburbs and see how many empty homes were in the suburbs. I just did Cliveley and Coogee, and there are ninety-two that, you know, sort of are empty there. And there are more than twelve hundred that are empty for part of the year. You know, this, as the mayor's pointed out, doesn't say, is not talking about taking about away anyone's home. This is also, you know, sort of carving out exceptions in the appropriate circumstances. But just where homes are just left, when we're in a housing crisis, we have to look at, you know, these sort of solutions. So I support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Pandelfini.
Sorry, yeah, I also support the motion. What a fantastic idea. I mean, I would also add that, you know, having empty homes, you know, for years and years and years, is really not a wonderful thing for a suburb and a community. You know, it's really not what we need, an empty place that, you know, encourages kids to perhaps, you know, go and play around in there or whatever, which I've heard of, you know, a lot before through some of the schools. And we are in a housing crisis. I mean, how many more times do we need to hear it? So it'd be fantastic to use absolutely every possible thing that we can do to ensure that people have spaces. And we know that people want to come and live in this area. So it's a great idea. Thanks.
Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to speak, I mean, I think the main target here is not necessarily homes that are left empty through illness or other unavoidable circumstances, which are explicitly excluded here. But the kind of thing we've been seeing in the Kensington to Kingsford development area, where land banking has been going on for years and it is completely denuded, large areas of that strip, because people have just been sitting on properties, waiting till the law comes through, so that they can build something that's significantly bigger. So I think we've seen heaps of places along there still completely habitable that are now boarded up or, you know, have been graffitied and trashed because people were waiting to make a bigger buck from it down the line. Now, I think it is just sensible planning policy to encourage it, either to be lived in for the meantime, then you don't have to pay this, or to develop it. You know, having properties just sitting there, large properties, particularly on those main arterials, just has made absolutely no sense. And I think whenever we talk about how sad it has been for those town centres with the development of the light rail, it is also the land banking that the community is paying the cost of.
Councillor Hay.
Councillor, I can't support this. We are in a housing crisis and I have some great colleagues in the Senate of, Senator Bragg in federal parliament wants to make this an issue, and Chris Rath and I of the State Senate, and I wholeheartedly endorse their approach. I can't endorse this approach, though. We've heard on council many times the importance of saving water. Now, the problem is, this will triple the rates from approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars to approximately twenty-five hundred dollars per dwelling, but they measure it by asking, have you used water? What's going to happen is people are just going to walk into the apartment once a month, turn on the tap, waste a ton of water, and they'll pay an extra ten dollars on their water bill so they can avoid paying an extra, well, seventeen fifty on a tax. I don't think this is well thought through and I can't support this motion, I'm afraid.
Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Loneliness and homelessness are becoming more and more prevalent in our community. Often loneliness and homelessness lead to mental health issues. Needless to say, they amputate the spirit and destroy the soul of a community. As a community, we must act to protect those vulnerable people and send them a clear message. We care and we will help. So I fully support what you're putting forward, Madam Mayor, because I think it's important that we say to these people, we care and we will help. Thank you very much.
If there are no further speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour, there's been a call for a division. We will go around the room. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Nielsen, councillor Luxford, councillor Chapel, councillor Parker, councillor Olive, councillor Pandelfini, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against, councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Rosenfeld and councillor McCafferty. I declare that carried. Oh, councillor Burst, I apologise. I declare that carried. We now move through the agenda in seriatum. So please challenge any items that you wish to debate. Oh, sorry, urgent business. Is there any urgent business? No. We'll now move to the items. As I said, we'll go through them in seriatum. C P thirty-seven slash twenty-four, post-exhibition report draft S seven twelve Development Contributions Plan twenty twenty-four, unchallenged. C P thirty-eight slash twenty, yeah, C P twenty-eight, just for the benefit of those online, slash twenty-four, V P A letter of offer, D A slash seven three one slash twenty twenty-three, three hundred and thirty-one to three hundred and thirteen and three hundred and fifteen to three hundred and fifteen A, Anzac Parade, Kingsford, challenged by councillor Hay. And just ask people to wait until the matter has been read. C P thirty-nine slash twenty-four, variations to development standards under clause four point six to one, one to June thirty, twenty twenty-four, unchallenged. Oh. Actually, you're correct. Both of those do need to be out. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thirty-seven and thirty-eight, you're correct. Okay. So I'll just move that and then someone can move it when we get to that matter. Okay. No worries. C P thirty-nine slash twenty-four, variations to development standards under clause four point six, one to thirtieth of June, twenty twenty-four, unchallenged. C P forty slash twenty-four, response to N M forty-four slash twenty-four stall at Saturday Circle Promoting Street and Community Gardens, challenged by councillor Sedd. C S thirty-six slash twenty-four, cycleways and bicycle facilities advisory committee. C C twelve slash twenty-four, report back on place assessment for Kingsford and Kensington Town Centres. Councillor Hay. C C thirteen slash twenty-four, community investment programme, July twenty twenty-four, Community Connect and Community Creative. Councillor Olive. C C fourteen slash twenty-four, community partnerships programme, July twenty twenty-four, unchallenged. C C fifteen slash twenty-four, community screening of Google Spears documentary, challenged by councillor Chapel. Councillor Chapel had her hand up. C O twenty-nine slash twenty-four, investment report to June twenty twenty-four, challenged by councillor Burst. C O thirty slash twenty-four, twenty twenty-three to twenty-four budget carryovers, unchallenged. And councillors online, just call out when I finish reading, because I'm sort of looking down. So if there is something you wish to challenge, maybe just unmute yourself beforehand and call out, please. And then that's it. We'll get to the motions after that. So may I have a mover for the unchallenged items? Councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by councillor Chapel. All those in favour, against, I declare that carried. So we now move to C P thirty-seven slash twenty-four, post-exhibition report draft seven twelve Development Contribution Plans, challenged by councillor Hamilton.
I'll just move it as per the business paper.
Are there any further speakers? Who is, do we have a second? Councillor Hay. Councillor Hay, do you wish to speak? If not, I'll put it. All those, oh, councillor Chapel.
Just briefly to speak to, I'm not going to vote against it, but I do think it's disappointing that we can only ever set this at one percent, which just clearly does not reflect what we should be looking to deliver for our community.
Thank you. I will put the motion, actually, I think we require, yeah, we require a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Pandelfini, how do you wish to vote? Councillor Pandelfini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Parker, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor declare that carried. We now move to C P thirty-eight slash twenty-four, V P A letter of offer, D A seven three one, twenty twenty-three, three hundred and eleven to three hundred and thirteen and three hundred and fifteen to three hundred and fifteen A, Anzac Parade, Kingsford, challenged by councillor Hay.
Thank you. I'd like to move this in a slightly amended form within U Point C. Further on detention, as the Director of City Planning has sent a member on my desk, there was a slight typo in the business paper. The monetary contribution will actually be just over four hundred thousand dollars, not sixteen twelve. And I'd like to affirm that we are going to spend that money in the Kensington and Kingsford Town Centres and. and some great ideas are included in the upcoming CC12 as good examples of what we could do.
Is there a second? Councillor Chapel? Yeah, I would like to thank councillor Chapel for actually picking up that era in the report, so thank you. Are there any, are there any further speakers? If not, I'll put it, all those, we will go straight to a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand, councillor Hamilton. Councillors online, can you please raise your hand if you wish to vote for this item? Councillor Pandolfini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Hay, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Parker, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against, councillor Luxford, I declare that carried. Councillor Luxford, please. We now move to CP40/24, Response to NM44/24, Stall at the Saturday Circle, Promoting Street and Community Gardens, challenged by councillor Sedd, seconded by councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll move this as per the business paper, but I do need to ask a question first and I may make a slight amendment. Can I ask the responsible officer when this was probably start? When they think this is at the start?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Saturday Circle's been going for a little while now.
Promotional, because we're adding the garden part and promotional, et cetera. There's a few additions to the Saturday Circle.
As soon as council resolves to this matter, we'll be getting on to it.
What I propose to amend is in U Point C that if we can, I know it's already established and I know it's already happening, but I'd just like the whole ramping up, which is in the recommendation, start after September the 14th, after the elections, because I just don't want it to become a political, if anyone decides they're going to turn up on Saturdays and promote themselves or anything. Not saying anyone would, but I'm just trying to eliminate that from happening. So I'd just like to see, because it's a fantastic idea and I'd hate to see it being ruined by anyone who thinks that they may turn up and sort of win the crowd over. So if possible, I'd just like it to start after the election.
Councillor Chapel, do you accept the amendment? Okay, are there any, councillor Chapel, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to say, I go to the Saturday Circle every time, not to relentlessly self-promote myself, but because there's a clothing swap and a toy swap and it's awesome. And I just want to commend the council staff on finding a really elegant solution to this, because I think it would have been very weird had we had paid staff down there and done like a full-on fancy schmancy thing. I know we do have also council staff there and I appreciate them and we've swapped some good clothes before. But I do think this is entirely in fitting with the character of what is happening down there and what's being created, and it's a really lovely little community down there every month. My kids love it and count the days down, I do too, and thank you.
councillor Olive.
Yeah, I want to echo those sentiments as well. I was just really impressed with the solution that council have come up with. And I put this out there before because, you know, sort of I thought council had, you know, sort of the the mechanism, have the things online as to what you have to do. But the actual promotion to, you know, the people who would be receptive, it may be a missing link for street gardens and community gardens. And this ticks all the boxes and it involves the community as well. And so I think that it's a great initiative and so I'm glad that we're supporting it.
councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, what we're doing is about community, it's not about politics. So really, we should go ahead with this, what's being proposed, because we talk about a sense of community, we always put community first. So let's do it, let's get it over with. P is for people, not politics, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? If not, I will put it, all those in favour.
Aye.
Against, I declare that carried. We now move to CS36/24, Cycleways and Bicycle Facilities Advisory Committee, May 2024, moved by councillor Luxford.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to move as per the business paper, but I would like to make a comment relating to comments made on page 80 of the business paper regarding comments from Bike East and a resident who I don't know who it is, but not that it matters, relating to the door knock of residents of Doncaster Avenue not being impartial. I'd just like to point out that this door knock was to capture the voices of the residents specifically who live with the cycleway every day. It was to hear their concerns in order to see how they may be alleviated for both sides, for cyclists and for residents. But it would appear by the comments made here by the resident and Bike East that they may be fearful of what the outcome of the door knock may bring. So that's just my little comment there and I will move as per the business paper.
councillor Olive, are you seconding? Thank you, do you wish to speak? Are there any further speakers, councillor Sedd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of questions because I have a little bit of confusion. On page 76, the Maruba Walking and Cycling Improvements Project, noting that council has deleted the cycleway component, has still had $400,000. Is that just for renewal of footpaths? If there's no cycle track?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. Councillor Sedd, that's correct, the cycleway component was removed and Transport for New South Wales permitted council officers to proceed on intersection work and full path upgrade to accommodate the walking improvements.
Then my second question of council officers is that on page 77, Maruba Road Corridor, which we just saw was deleted, has had nearly $933,000 spent, nearly a million dollars spent. And I don't understand what it's been spent on because it's not happening.
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. Councillor Sedd, can I just confirm that you're referring to the table on page 77? The table on page 77 sets out the applications made to Transport for New South Wales for certain projects in the 24, 25 financial year. The application for the Maruba Road Corridor upgrade is in relation to the, I believe, over nine intersections along the corridor for intervention. And we're seeking nearly $933,000 for the completion of the detailed design for those intersections.
Can I just ask then, because people in Centralwood have been crying out for this, the fixing up of Maruba Road and the intersections for a long time, and they feel like it's not happening. But it's obviously is because it's been funded. So can we move that out of the bike section and move it into somewhere where people can actually see that it's like council is actually doing something about it? Because there's, on all the forums, everyone keeps crying out to what's happening along the Maruba Road intersections. And I think because it's buried in here, they're not realising what's going on. So that's just a suggestion. And one last question. Again, the Todman Avenue, Lenthall Street Walking and Cycling Improvements. I remember a few years ago, Todman Avenue apparently was too hard to build a cycle track because of the roundabouts, et cetera, yet that's also getting funding. So again, I'm a bit confused about where it's going because it was withdrawn years ago.
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. The Todman Avenue cycleway that was removed from the works list a couple of years ago was in relation to the pop-up cycleway that wasn't deemed to be feasible at the time, given that there was too much infrastructure that had to be moved, physical infrastructure for the inclusion of a pop-up cycleway. However, the Todman and Lenthall cycleway still remains on council's bike priority list, but we essentially stopped progressing on a pop-up to look to move to a more permanent solution where you would require the infrastructure to be moved anyway.
That's just made me think, can we, is it possible, a question through the general manager, then when these things are on hold and if they're not going to be used, are we able to divert these funds to necessary sort of roadworks that need to be done in other parts of the LGA or does it have to stay there forever?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we can certainly advocate the Transport for New South Wales to do that, but they normally fund for a particular project, which what council applies for?
I've got councillor Pandolfini online and then councillor Olive. Councillor Pandolfini?
Sorry, I'm working with very slow here. I just wanted to say at this point in the, in our terms that to thank the chair of the incredible committee and all of the members for the phenomenal work that they do. I, as a beneficiary, as a new bike back on my bike rider, have been benefiting from the extraordinary work that they've been doing. And I know that so many people in the community are so keen to get on their bikes and it's an exceptional group of people. And yeah, I just wanted to say a huge thanks to all of them because I don't think that we will be having another meeting before the end of their term. So thanks to councillor Olive for chairing and to all the amazing participants and council staff.
Thank you, councillor Olive.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the point that often, and I can't verify it right at the moment, but there's kind of some repetition between what goes on in the cab fac minutes and what goes on in the traffic committee minutes. So you might well find what's in here is in the traffic committee minutes and it's not being, you know, sort of hidden away and people do have access to it. It's just in both, you know, that's.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? Councillor Luxford, did you wish to close the meeting? No, if not, I'll put it, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We now go to CC12/24, Report Back on Place Assessment for Kingsford and Kensington Town Centres, challenged by councillor Hay.
Thank you, I'll move this as per the business paper. I just wanted to ask a question of the director of city services. If I could draw your attention to page 93, in the centre graphic at the bottom, our third worst performing attribute is amenities of facilities, toilets, water babbles, parents' rooms. The one public toilet we had in the Kingsford Town Centre is now closed and without repair and there's none in the town centre part of Kensington. I'd just like to ask what, if there are current plans to install new public toilets and what movement is going in the space?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. The toilet that does currently reside in the Meek Street Plaza was previously maintained by J C Deco. J C Deco have advised council some time ago now that they're no longer proceeding with the maintenance or upkeep of those type of toilet amenities. We did look to see if it's feasible to retrofit that amenities. So council may maintain, however, we've deemed that now not feasible. So council, in the coming new term, council officers will discuss and brief the council on the consideration of another new toilet block in a future works programme. Thank you.
councillor Hamilton.
It's not the same area, but it's the same item. Can I ask, the toilet that's sitting outside of Alison Park, that's one of those as well, isn't it? So does that mean that that's been closed as well?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor, that's correct.
Are there any other speakers, councillor Luxford?
While we're, you know, looking at all this wonderful stuff at Anzac Parade, Kingsford and Kensington, of which I did sit in on one of these meetings, and I must say, yeah, I didn't find it altogether that inciting. I just thought those people were telling us how to suck eggs, really. But in all of this, Meek Street Plaza still looks like just a nothing, a desolate wasteland out of a Mad Max movie. When will we be seeing any more improvement there since we know the toilet's gone and, you know, people are up in arms? Yeah, but it should have already been done.
Through to the director of city services. Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, there was a concept that went to the community, it was adopted by the council. The council staff have been working on that, recently went down and had looked. Most of those works that were not completed at the initial stage have been completed. The only thing that's outstanding from what I saw was the colourful paving that's outside, extra treatment been put in where they're supposed to be put in, extra plantings being put in down there and the lighting's been put in down there. So there's just one stage that hadn't been, when I went and looked, hadn't been done, which I know that the city services are looking at doing. And they will then complete what council actually resolved to do.
Question to that, we did ask for more seating or somewhere for people to sit and tables and chairs perhaps was part of the question and part of the original concept drawings that we had seen. And they are non-existent and there's just a couple of bench seats on the side, you know. So are we going to get those kind of tables and chairs where people can actually sit at or not?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, Madam Mayor. The installation of street furniture is imminent, was ordered at the commencement of the additional works to meet the concept that council resolved. So at any stage, those seats will be delivered and furniture to site installed immediately.
Are there any further speakers, councillor Hay, do you wish to close the debate?
I'll put it.
I will put it, all those in favour. Against, I declare that carried. We now move to CC13/24, Community Investment Programme, July 2024, Community Connect and Community Creative, challenged by councillor Olive.
Yeah, so I just want to move this as per the business papers, but I do have a question to the relevant officers. So it was just that, you know, sort of last time, I don't know, a year ago, or maybe, I'm not sure whether it was the year before, but, you know, sort of just asked whether, you know, sort of people who, let me go back, this is terribly oversubscribed. Obviously, a lot of people want, you know, sort of funding, you know, sort of on this programme. And so, you know, sort of there are many more people wanting funding than the funding that's allocated here. So, but all that time ago, I asked whether, you know, sort of there was a feedback given and, you know, sort of something for people who were unsuccessful to work on to improve their submissions next time. And one of the reasons that they hadn't quite done it at the time was because of staffing issues. I just wanted to, you know, sort of, is that happening at the moment? That there is feedback for the unsuccessful applicants and, you know, sort of are there things that they can work on for their, for next time if they choose to do another submission? Thank you.
Through to the director of community and culture.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, councillor Olive, there is feedback for recipients who are unsuccessful and they are given specific information as to how do we improve their application next time. And we also hold grant information sessions for people.
And we also hold grant information sessions for people leading up to the grants as well.
Is there a second, um councillor, uh councillor Nielsen? Uh councillor Nielsen, do you wish to speak? Are there any further speakers? If not, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Um we now go to CC fifteen slash twenty-four. Yeah, uh community screening of Giggles Spears documentary challenged by councillor Chapel.
Just moving as per the business paper.
Councillor Nielsen?
Just to say, I'm so pleased that this is going to happen. I think it's going to be a wonderful event and I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you. If there are no further speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Uh we now go to CO twenty-nine slash twenty-four. Investment report, June twenty twenty-four, challenged by councillor Burst.
I'd just like to thank um Stephen Wong and the team for a great result again. Um for the, you know, overall investment returns. If we don't have money, we can't spend it. So and if we don't save it, we can't spend it. So um it's a great result. And Stephen, please pass on a big thanks to your um accounts receivable team for all the work they do in revenue receipts and so on. Um, you know, going out and fighting hard to get that money back into the coffees is a great, is 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 unheralded work that no one really appreciates. It's behind the scenes, but it's important and is vital to um to a good running of a council. So thank you for your support, Stephen, and I'm looking forward to seeing you back onto the run-on team on the bench instead of being the, you know. I'm sure Ray will sort it out.
Uh it, thank you councillor Burst. Is there a second, um? Uh councillor Sed, um councillor Sed, do you wish to speak? Any further speakers? I will put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Does anyone wish to have a break or can we go straight to the motions? Just go straight through? Yeah, terrific. Um we will go to NM fifty-nine slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld. Supply of a defibrillator at Nagel Park Maribro. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, um I I have uh uh in discussion with some of the executives from Randwick Rugby Club. They mentioned that uh they're, because their juniors play at Nagel Park. Uh and uh there's uh quite often, parents and grandparents uh uh go and watch uh the uh the rugby um played. Uh and uh uh they're they have been um thinking for for a fair while about having a defibrillator defibrillator there uh just as a safety measure. Uh it's also uh used occasionally when there's heavy weather and we can't uh put a lot of games at Coogee Oval. Uh we we occasionally uh um uh we'll have some lower grade rugby, which we did recently um at that Nagel Park. Um um and um for that reason, um uh they they asked for that. So I've asked for a report on this. Uh I had got some rough costings from one of the council offices. Um but I have asked for a report to come back for some some more exact costings. And um it's certainly, given the amount of people who go and watch this junior rugby, it'll certainly be beneficial for the community.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel, do you wish to speak?
Uh just to say, I strongly support the motion.
Uh there was no councillor Chapel seconded and there's a question from councillor Luxford.
Might be the same. Um just a question here. Um point B, this is to be locked in a storeroom in the storerooms located in amenities block. So I'm presuming there isn't one at Nagel Nagel Park already. Um and locked away in a storeroom wouldn't be exactly the place it should go. I'm presum, we would not mount it on a wall outside um if we were to put a defibrillator at the park.
Through to the Director of City Services.
Through yourself, Madam Mayor. Um in the report that we we bring back to council, uh we we would more than likely recommend that the um defib is installed um on the external of the building, um which which does make provision for its use um for for other members using the the field. Uh we have precedent of that um in the first round of defib installs across some of the open space areas.
Uh are there any further questions? Or any further speakers rather? Um councillor Rosenfeld, did you wish to close?
Uh just very briefly, the only reason I mentioned to to lock it in the storeroom uh is just um because, so there's no uh theft or or any damage to the defibrillator. And obviously, the club has access to the storeroom when they play. But if the report uh can recommend something, that'll they'll ensure that the the defibrillator will be will be safe. Then uh happy to have a look at that once it comes back.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now go to NM sixty slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Burst. Passing of Andrew William Galotta, OAM, naming Galotta's corner and a plaque.
I'm actually going to withdraw this motion till uh next year and then review it again next year.
Okay, thank you. Um NM sixty-one slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Burst. Investigate rectification plan and funding for removal of building debris on Little Bay Beach. Councillor Burst. Councillor Burst?
Um I had the, I was able to actually go down yesterday morning. It was a beautiful morning down in Little Bay. The sun was shining. It was a little bit um brisk and chilly. Um and we had two of our senior council officers down there with us. Um and um and two of the co um the co-chairs of the Bays and Beaches. And uh looking at the debris that's it's on Little Bay Beach. And um it was, it was a problem that's been happening. It happened originally with Landcom um some ten, twelve years ago. Um and debris's coming down through that that river system or that creek system because of when there's there's rains and flooding and and debris gets removed from the walls on the side of that that sort of valley. Um so there will be, so the plan is to look at a plan, um how we can identify that. Write to our environment, state and federal environment ministers uh to look at some funding, as it was a Landcom site. So I think they should um play a part in the rectification of this area. And um thank you to our senior officers for coming down and looking at it as well. It's very much appreciated. And um we need to get the beach looking crisp, clean, clear, and get rid of the debris as soon as possible. Thank you. Um by the way, just one little question. I did have one person came back to me and said, with all those bricks that are down there, over twenty years, I picked up bricks, carried them up to my house, and I've done the whole of my backyard, paved my backyard with those bricks. So they have had a, they have this, the the ultimate renewables and recycling um in action. So it was great to see. Thank you.
Uh councillor Sed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I was also down there yesterday. And um it it's good to see that council officers and uh there's a lot of committed people on those precincts that, you know, they really want to make the area look good in that part of Little Bay Beach. And it, again, as most people probably wouldn't realise, it's probably one of the only beaches that a council does run. And Little Bay Beach is is ours. So the bricks come from the other side of the beach, which is Crown Land. Um we have done in the past, we've picked up asbestos, we make sure that our residents are kept safe. And the only thing that's happening now is that that's been removed, but the bricks do look unsightly. And there's also, um there's bits of, we actually noticed yesterday that there was bits of crockery down there from from Prince Henry Hospital. So it's probably about fifty, sixty years old. Um but if it goes on the beach and you step on it, it will cut your foot. So it's not that old. So um it it's a great thing. And all we're asking for, and as councillor Burst has asked for, is that um if the state and federal government can help us to remove it from the other side of the wall, we'll do our hardest to get it off the beach. Um and it'll be a win-win for everybody.
Thank you councillor Chapel.
Yeah, just want to speak in support of the motion and of the joy of going and picking up small pieces of crockery when you are snorkeling in there. It really is one of the fun things about Little Bay Beach.
Councillor De Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I didn't attend this particular meeting because I knew there was little I could contribute because we had two experts there. And that was really important. I'd already talked to the general manager of this matter. And he had, he he had reassured me that it was well under control. But what is so important as the outcome of this is that we listen to the people. The precinct committee had said, look, this is an issue. Pete Fagan, I think, the one of the co-chairs said, this was an issue and we need to address it. And we talked about Landcom, we talked about history, and we talked about accountability. And when I spoke to the general manager, he said to me, look, Noel, this is our beach now. Randwick council owns it. Or who is the custodian, I should serve the beach, and we will do something about it. Now, you know, Madam Mayor and councillors, community safety is paramount in Randwick City. So again, it didn't take much to get the year of the general manager and request action. And what happened today was confirmation that we're moving forward. We're going to investigate what's the best way to to fix this problem because it's a recurring problem. Every time we have heavy rain, we it well, what we were doing was a Band-Aid type solution. We were fixing it up. Heavy rain came, the problem would arise again. But the impression I got talking to the right people, as I said, the experienced people, the educated people of this matter, they've assured me that this time, we're going to do it right and we're going to make a difference for the community. But most importantly, Madam Mayor, we listened. We have precinct committees for a reason. And on this occasion, they made it clear that they weren't happy. And Mr Fagan did say he had tried in the past and hadn't got the desired result. But I think this time, we're going to do it right. So has my full support. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Burst, did you wish to say any final words? If not, I'll put it. All those in favour, say aye. And against, I declare that carried. Uh we now go to NM sixty-two slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Hay. LG New South Wales, Kensington Post Office motion. Councillor Hay?
Um I I'll move it, uh I I should like to amend point a uh brief, briefly. I'll I'll move it mostly as per the business paper. Uh as this is going to LGNSW, um it it, wh- while we absolutely should be calling up the closure of the post office in Kensington, I'd like to um I I should probably mention that the Rockdale Post Office is also um scheduled to close in September. So just, instead of just making this just about Randwick, we can look out for our friends in Bayside and other places across the state as well. So after Kensington, before uh put a, if I can ask Mr Kelly to put in a uh uh co, uh put in a comma, uh residence at Kensington, a comma, uh the the potential closure of the post office in Rockdale. If.
Um councillor Hay, if you would permit me to speak, just I was having formally been on a committee that looks at those. Uh just having discussed these at LG New South Wales, they have fairly strict criteria about applying very uh broadly across the state or to a large region. Um and they're fairly strict. The the staff do the first assessments and make the recommendations as to whether uh the motions meet the criteria. So you, I'm just uh totally up to you, but um I'm just suggesting you may just wish to make it something like, you know, possibly uh even remove point A and just have a point B that says, is LG New South Wales advocate for uh the retention and increase of uh straight post offices in New South Wales? Or something similar to that, which anyway, u- u- up to you, but I'm just noting that that the criteria, they they do apply that fairly strictly.
Are you saying that if we have the word Kensington in there, that it might be rejected? Residents across, yeah, so if we remove the word Kensington, just say residents across the state then? Is B still necessary then? No, no, then we can, we can remove uh remove point B. Sorry. Oh, hang on, sorry, we'll leave point B in then.
Point B is what line you should have.
Thanks. A and B fine, sorry. Uh yeah, so yeah, because because a suitable local alternative is um. True, um. Yeah, we we just, yeah, but let's, if we could just.
Also, just if you just permit me again to to speak through the chair, all these motions are addressed to the New South Wales State Government. So the, if you're calling on the Commonwealth Government, they would be for the National Conference. So they will only accept motions calling on the New South, on actions that uh have, the New South Wales Government has the ability to uh put into motion.
How about you withdraw and think about it and redo it at the next meeting?
I don't think you need to. I think, you know, a lot of what the mayor's suggesting, then the title just be, like, what New South Wales Randwick Post Office Motion? And then keep being.
Mm-hmm. And then we'll keep being. And if they reject it, they reject it. But let's go point B.
Yeah.
So if I could ask um Mr Kelly to delete point A. Okay, so I'll defer this to the next meeting. It's deferred to the next meeting.
Um councillor Hay, do you really wish to, you want to completely amend it rather than withdraw and just put a a new motion? You're deferring it?
Yeah, I I'll defer, I'll defer it to the next meeting and um we'll have an, we'll have an off-the-record conversation and uh we'll come to a wording we can all agree to.
So can you mo, can you just move that, please, councillor Hay? Yeah, thank you. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. We now go to NM sixty-three slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Olive. Campaign to promote longer-term hosted rentals in the Randwick LGA. Councillor Olive?
Uh yes, as has been, has been previously mentioned, you know, sort of we've got, we're going through a hu- housing and homelessness crisis. The state government is uh is uh, the state government is um uh pushing to have three hundred and seventy-seven thousand new homes um completed by uh twenty twenty-nine. Um and if we look at Randwick Council itself and, you know, sort of uh the uh the the um where people who work in Randwick live, a lot of people come from outside and and uh work actually in Randwick. I think um it was about forty percent or more last time I saw. I I'm not, I'm not sure exactly of the numbers at the moment, but something like that. Um uh the thing is, the thing is that uh in order to do this, you know, sort of we uh that's uh um it's high impact, you know, um knockdown, rebuild. But, you know, sort of, it's also true that, you know, sort of, we probably have a lot of unused capacity, you know, sort of in in our housing at the moment. Um people with spare rooms, there are, you know, sort of um, I mentioned before, you know, sort of um uh people who don't live in their their places for the whole year. And so, you know, sort of, we have to ask ourselves how this can be utilised. Council then to uh put in a submission to for a discussion paper with Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure on uh short-term rental accommodation. And um the thrust of their argument, of council's argument, was that we should have um ninety, ninety-day caps on um on unhoused housing. That was to try and promote long-term housing, uh long-term housing. That was to try and promote long term housing, uh, long term housing options, you know, sort of to, uh, flip people over into, you know, sort of seeing that as a better offer. Um, what I'm suggesting here is that, uh, council undergo some kind of campaign or promotional campaign, uh, and and discussions with relevant organisations to, um, try and work out ways that we can, uh, promote the idea of, uh, long term accommodation in existing homes, maybe a spare room idea, that if you've got a spare room, how can you, you know, sort of, um, fill that, you know, sort of to your economic advantage perhaps? Um, you know, sort of, and then that might be something that might suit people who, uh, you know, so have to travel a long way, um, uh, at a particular time in their lives. And so, you know, sort of, that could be, you know, sort of, a a solution for certain people. But in order to, uh, connect these people, we have to have some sort of a campaign to, uh, to, um, uh, do this. I'm suggesting, you know, sort of, that we can do things like, you know, sort of, um, uh, have have websites, you know, sort of, um, uh, that where, you know, sort of where we can try and connect renters with organisations. We could even have a how to kit. If you're thinking about doing this, how do you actually go about, um, uh, you know, sort of, uh, speaking to the right people so that you can, you know, sort of, um, advertise for rental accommodation? What are the sort of things you have to do in your home in order to be able to, um, uh, uh, make this feasible? Um, that kind, that kind of thing. And so I I commend this, you know, sort of, um, this motion, you know, sort of, uh, as a start in looking at, uh, uh, long term, uh, ho- hosted housing for people, you know.
Thank you. Uh, Councillor Nelson.
I wasn't going to to speak, but now I've got to my feet, of course I will. Um, I seem to recall that, um, Wulara Council is particularly active with us, with a particular scheme, and I can't recall the name of it. Um, but I know that, um, Frida Kedus, well, if I were to text Frida, she would know immediately the name of it. And it's a very good scheme that allows or encourages people who might be elderly, who actually want to encourage somebody who might come and share the, uh, the house, they might be renting the room and so on. Sometimes it's a student, a foreign student and and so on. So there are these very good schemes that, um, are in existence, uh, and work quite well. But I think it's something that we could do well to be, um, following up on it and doing a little bit more publicity, even if it's just a couple of public meetings, to encourage people as to whether it's a good idea, bad idea and and so on. Because I think sometimes people just need to be a little bit encouraged. But I certainly know there are wonderful stories that you hear of, that older people who think, oh, yes, I could do with a little bit of company, someone, um, you know, who, um, shares a room and whatever, and the benefits that come and the sociability and so on, um, can be really quite, um, quite wonderful on on all fronts. So, yes, I think it's definitely something worth following up on. Thanks, Councillor Olive.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Olive, do you wish to close? If not, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Division? Go to a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Um, all those online, can you raise your hand close to your face maybe? Councillor Pendlefini, are you voting for this? I think Councillor Pendlefini maybe has frozen. Um, councillor.
Ah, yes, I'm voting.
Yep, thank you. Yes, from Councillor Pendlefini, Councillor Nielsen, Councillor Luxford, Councillor Parker, Councillor Chapel, Councillor Olive. Um, Councillor McCafferty, is that a yes? No? Councillor Wilson, Councillor Sedd, Councillor D'Souza and the mayor, all those against. Councillor Hamilton, Councillor Rosenfeld, Councillor Hay, Councillor McCafferty and Councillor Burst, I declare the motion carried. We'll now go to N M sixty four slash twenty four. Notice of motion from Councillor Chapel, webcasting of council meetings. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think people here may recall that I did bring a motion to council a couple of years back about webcasting. Um, in the meantime, I put some questions on about costs because I did hear from the room that there was a really significant concern that we were, you know, already running a fairly lenient ship and we didn't want to kind of add to that. Um, the answers to that were confidential, but we have all seen them and we understand the costs are not prohibitive. Um, so I'm just proposing we begin a three month trial. Um, when I originally proposed this, there were some concerns about what this would mean for culture, what this would mean for, you know, how people would behave at the meeting. So I think maybe a trial is an appropriate way of assessing that and seeing if people behave or whether it is a negative influence on cohesion in this space. Um, and I would say, um, uh, for my day job, I have recently been listening to a lot of, um, committee hearings and some of them are with video and some of them are audio only because apparently Parliament House, if you have a remote hearing, cannot sort out video. And, um, it is baffling trying to work out who is talking in a room of ten people, you know, and there's fifteen of us here. I cannot, I I do not think it's fair that we expect any resident to actually be able to tell the difference between our voices to understand what's actually going on. And that's not even talking about the council officers or the community members. Being able to see our face is so much more accessible. It makes it so much easier to put live captions on online, follow along, see what's going on, be able to flick forwards and backwards if you want to see a specific person speaking or whatever, rather than having a, what is currently a six and a half hour of an audio track on YouTube with no indication of who is speaking at what time. Um, I don't know if anybody else has ever tried to go back and see what happened in a meeting or, you know, what what they said about something because they couldn't quite remember. Um, but it's really inaccessible. Um, so I would love if other councillors would support, um, this small, uh, accessibility option. It is limited and I think, you know, if we were going to move to doing it permanently, that would have to be another motion. So it would just lapse after three months, um, and I think we should give it a go.
Is there a second, Councillor Olive? Would you like to speak? Are there any further speakers? Councillor Nelson.
Um, I oppose this, um, motion, not that I'm totally opposed to webcasting and so on, but I do think that a decision on this should be made by the new council when they come in. I think it should be something that, uh, they're the ones who are deciding whether or not to do webcasting. And I think they need a little bit of time to, um, become accustomed to actually, um, sitting around this, uh, horseshoe that we sit around with and so on. And definitely, um, there are ways of things being filmed and presented that can make things a lot more interesting than, uh, otherwise. And I take the point that Councillor Chapel's making, that just listening in, even though I've got actually very good hearing ability to tell the difference between different people's voices, it's, um, that's only part of the issue. The other issue is trying to follow which matter that is that's actually being discussed because without even having the business paper there, um, in front of you, it makes it difficult. But if you're at home and you're trying to follow online and then watching as well, it's very, very difficult. So we need a more sophisticated way of actually filming and so on. So I would say it's something to, uh, look into. Um, I think it's something definitely be investigated, but I would, um, oppose it at this stage. So I would, um, I'm I'm not going to support it now, but I I would say that, um, it's something that should come to the new councillors for them to make a decision as to what they want to do. So I'm going to oppose it at this stage.
Councillor Chapel.
Uh, look, I think that's a fair point. Why don't we amend it to a one month trial? If that's possible?
That doesn't, um, defer my, um, particular objection because I think it's something that should be made. The decision as to whether or not webcasting should be happening at council meetings, that should be made by the new council.
Okay, are there any further speakers? If not, I'll put it. All those in favour? Against? I declare it lost. It's lost. Yeah, you want a division? Yep. No worries. Uh, we call for a division. All those in favour? Please raise your hand. Councillor, yeah, Councillor Pendlefini. Um, Councillor Chapel, Councillor Olive, Councillor D'Souza and the mayor. Oh, and Councillor Sedd. All those against? Councillor Hamilton, Councillor Nielsen, Councillor Hay, Councillor Luxford, Councillor Rosenfeld, Councillor Parker, Councillor McCafferty, Councillor Wilson and Councillor Burst. Um, I declare the motion lost. We'll now go to N M sixty five slash twenty four. Uh, notice of motion from Councillor Hay, affordable housing for key workers strategy.
Uh, thank you. Uh, when I was, um, first started dating my now wife, we, uh, she was working in aged care and had to do a lot of driving around and, sorry, was she couldn't drive at the time? She did a lot of, uh, random, hmm? Okay, so she had to do, she had to do a lot of, uh, shift work at, in a lot of locations. And I can't help but think that a lot of nurses who currently work at Randwick hospitals and, uh, uh, similar locations are in a similar spot where they'll have to travel for over an hour, uh, to help us. And when whenever we get a, whenever any of us are in hospital, we we want to be served by someone who is fresh and enthusiastic to be there. And if there's some way we can help them, uh, help, uh, help them, because they give so much to us, we could do something to help them. Now, this isn't just exclusive for nurses, that's possible, possibly for, uh, I've written nurses, midwives, uh, aged care workers, police, fire and ambulance officers, and also potentially for teachers. But I, but I'll especially mention that we, if we cast our mind back to the L E P, we've approved a, uh, housing investigation, investigation area at McGillville Street and we've, and a second housing investigation area at Arthur Street, um, as well as we've got a Randwick Junction Town Centre master plan. So there is a fair amount of development that's happening near the hospital. And, uh, as I've written in the first line of the background, we've got, uh, twenty eight and a half million coming into a affordable housing contribution fund. On top of that, uh, there is a state government parliamentary inquiry into housing for essential workers. So if we can, uh, and there's maybe the possibility that there will be, uh, some o- opportunity for partnership with the state government down the line. So if we can write a really good submission to the parliamentary inquiry and, uh, that puts us in a good position to maybe get, uh, some sort of a deal with the state government, potentially with a hospital, and place, uh, some good affordable housing, uh, perhaps a hundred or two hundred units, uh, in somewhere near the hospital. And if we partner with a hospital, maybe we could get that for nurses. But we need to do some, uh, due diligence first and make a really good submission to parliamentary inquiry and, uh, amend our affordable housing strategy to look at what we're doing for key workers. So, um, I urge you all to support this motion and, uh, see what we can do to give back to the workers who do so much to help us.
Uh, Councillor Hamilton is the second.
I'd just like to say that I throw my support behind Councillor Hay when it comes to this. He comes from a place of, um, understanding, empathy, uh, first hand experience. And so I hope that everyone else supports this as well.
Councillor Olive.
Yeah, I'd like to put up an amendment, uh, please. Um, Mr. Kelly, could you put the amendment up there, please? Um, my amendment is that, uh, the council, uh, endorsed endorsing needs based eligibility selection criteria for tenants in the draft affordable housing strategy as recommended by council staff. And also support the lodgment of a submission to the parliamentary inquiry into housing for essential workers, which includes the needs of such housing, uh, to be provided in, um, the Randwick L G A. This, uh, um, the, the reasons why I I have put this up here, um, as a needs based eligibility section criteria rather than a key worker selection criteria, which is, um, with the original motion, is because the key worker, um, uh, criteria is a move away from, uh, supporting transitional housing. We know that, you know, sort of a woman dies for, uh, once every four days from domestic violence. And, you know, sort of, we have an obligation to be in this space. And council already has, you know, sort of a, um, a substantial part of its, it's small but growing housing stock, um, supporting transitional housing and supporting women in this particular case, giving, giving them somewhere that they can actually move to. And, uh, be, this key worker, um, uh, criteria would, uh, would divert completely from that. Um, second of all, I mean, I think in the original motion, there there are no, uh, standards, you know, sort of in terms of, uh, or there there's no definition in terms of, um, uh, earning capacity, you know, sort of as to who would be eligible for, um, this particular housing. If you're looking at a nurse assistant or an enrolled nurse or maybe a first year nurse, you know, and, uh, an assistant earning under a thousand dollars a week, housing in this area is quite, would be quite difficult to afford. But if you're looking at, you know, sort of, um, a clinical nurse specialist or consultant or a director of nursing, you're looking at more than twice the, twice the income. But you you've, uh, you've outlined nursing, nurses without, you know, sort of actually putting some kind of income standard on on that. Um, I think that it's got to be also in the context of the housing that, you know, sort of is coming online and being promoted by the state government and also community, community housing providers. What are they providing? You know, sort of, we know that, you know, sort of with, um, the state government, they're given, giving, um, uh, concessional, uh, um, uh, space for, um, to developers for affordable housing and sort of how much is this going to affect, you know, sort of our housing for, um, uh, for nurses particularly at that top end? Because this housing is, um, as a percentage, uh, a, a percentage of the market that it's, um, uh, lower than, rather than a, um, uh, a housing stress model where, you know, sort of it's less than thirty percent of an income. Um, I think that we've got to be strategic with our housing stock and we've got to look at, you know, sort of what are the needs of our community? And then, and we also have to be nimble to be in this space because a lot's happening. And so, you know, sort of to pitch, to straitjacket us into one thing, I don't think would be, you know, sort of fair on, you know, our residents. And and I think it could do, um, you know, sort of, it could be a bad outcome for certain members of our community that desperately need our help. So, you know, so I would consider, you know, sort of, uh, the amendment here and the needs based strategy. Uh, needs based selection criteria.
Uh, councillor, uh, who I had. Do you accept the amendment? Yes.
Is this as as an additional point or is this replacing the motion? But this is completely removing the, um. Yeah, but you've completely removed essential workers from point A. Just except, yeah. Yes, I, yeah, we'll accept that. And are you happy to include, if we further amend it to include the words key workers in point A?
The draft included including key workers. It's recommended by council staff.
Uh, enjoy the, uh, oh, yeah, well, yeah, yes, okay. It doesn't preclude, it doesn't preclude key workers. That's, yes, okay. And, yeah, yep, okay, fine.
There we go. Uh, so if we could, Mr. Kelly, if we could change that to, uh, criteria for tenants in the draft of, in the draft about affordable housing strategy, comma, including key workers as recommended by council staff. And with regards to point B, we're still doing the same inquiry. That's right. Thank you.
I actually had councillor D'Souza, then councillor Parker, then councillor Chapel.
I don't need to speak anymore. It's been resolved by the amendment.
Madam Mayor, the word essential worker or key worker speaks for itself. Where would we be without these good people? In my day, around hospitals, we had nurses' quarters. Convenient, easy, affordable, all those words could be used. But the important thing is we looked and looked after these nurses at Prince Henry, at Prince Alfred Hospital and all the other ones. So there's a template already. But in saying that, a lot of our essential workers or key workers, they shift, also shift workers, often they've got to do an extra shift because someone hasn't turned up or someone, uh, is running late. Now, these poor key workers, essential workers, they then do an extra shift and they're tired. And they drive long distances because they can't afford to live in these areas. And really, they endanger themselves, their lives and, and put their family's security is jeopardised. So, yes, it's really important that we accommodate our essential workers or key workers. It's very important that we do things that say, yes, we all say thank you to them, they save our lives, they protect us from evil and criminals, they put out the fires. But most importantly, thank you is, is nice and pat them on the back and say, well done. But let's do something more than that, let's make it affordable for them to live close to their places of work so they save on travel time. And also that their safety is not jeopardised because as I said, a lot of them are also shift workers and do long shifts or extra shifts. And in doing so, a lot of them get very tired and can jeopardise their safety. So I fully support this notice of motion, well done councillor Haye.
Uh, councillor Chapel, we have no, no more speakers. Um, there, there's no further speakers, councillor Haye, do you wish to close? I will put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. We now go to NM sixty six slash twenty four, notice of motion from councillor Wilson, equitable briefing policy, councillor Wilson, seconded by councillor Chapel.
It was suggested to me by councillor Nelson that we should change this, the name of this, uh, of this motion because, uh, it doesn't actually indicate what's equitable, um, and it possibly should be the gender equitable briefing policy. Um, but it, the idea of the policy, if you've had a look at it, is that it's a difficult thing when you, um, start at the bar, it's difficult for any barrister, but it's statistically proven that it's more difficult for women. And, uh, this is just a strategy that the Australian Law Council, um, has come up with that, uh, to make it a little bit easier for women barristers starting out. Um, and although, you know, we'll be calling it the gender equitable briefing policy at the moment, um, at some time in the future, they're hoping to be able to update it to include other different kinds of, uh, diversity. Um, but at the moment, eh, eh, if you've had a look at the policy, you can see that it doesn't bind council to anything except reporting, um, how many, how many, who they brief during the year and, um, the statistics of that, whether they're, they're men or women and the reasoning behind that. And it's quite possible already that council exceeds the, uh, the percentages that are recommended, uh, in which case we'll be very, very happy to report that. Um, and if not, then, um, certainly, uh, we'll, we'll do our best to, uh, to reach gender equity because, uh, council's very committed to that, I know that. I commend this motion to you.
Thank you councillor Chapel.
Thank you, madam mayor, and thank you councillor Wilson for bringing this, um, just to say I strongly support this. I do think we should consider briefing more women for a time, just to restore the historical imbalance. Um, but in the absence of that as a proposal, I support this.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Wilson, did you wish to close? I will put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. Yeah, we now go to closed session. Ah, yes.